Mayor Sanchez?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Keim?
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Here.
Councilmember Weiss?
Here.
Thank you. We do have an invocation this evening by Cantor Larry Cornet, followed by Star Spangled Banner by a superstar from City of Oceanside, that is Laura Williams, and then after that we will have Pledge of Allegiance. Stand, please.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and council members. Let us pray. Avino Malkano, our Father, our King, I believe it is not an understatement to say that we live in challenging times. For those of the Christian faith, next week marks the birth of Jesus Christ with the celebration of Christmas, and for those of us of the Jewish faith, tonight we celebrate the seventh night of Hanukkah. So it's appropriate to talk about what the word Hanukkah means. Hanukkah means rededication. When the temple in Jerusalem was desecrated, the Hebrews cleaned it out and rededicated it. And now we, as residents of Oceanside, a city that was incorporated 132 years ago, have an opportunity to rededicate ourselves to the task of building a better Oceanside. Today, we celebrate Oceanside's diversity, as yesterday we inaugurated its first Latina and first woman mayor, Ms. Esther Sanchez. However, there is still much work to be done. We, as residents, must band together to help our mayor in her effort. We ask that Mayor Sanchez be imbued with those inherent qualities of leadership that she has built and will continue to build. We ask all the members of the city council to learn how to disagree without being disagreeable, and with a new steward, move our city forward while maintaining Oceanside's character. We ask your protection for our first responders at all levels, and for those who are missing their families either by distance or by loss due to this horrid pandemic. And we pray that these new vaccines give us the ability to get back to the business of being able to frequent our local businesses once more safely and without restriction. And most importantly, we ask for your gift of peace between countries, peace between peoples, and the peace of mind reminding our hearts that we are stronger together when we come together. Baruch atah Adonai, oh Se哈Shalom. Blessed are you who grants us the gift of peace. And let us all say amen.
Amen. Thank you, Cantor. Remain standing, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Okay, perfect. Here we go. Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light What so proudly we hailed At the twilight's last gleaming Whose broad stripes and bright stars Through the perilous fight Or the ramparts we watched Were so gallantly streaming And the rocket's rung like the bombs bursting in air Gave proof through the night That our flag was still there Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave For the land of the free And the home of the brave?
Congratulations, Mayor Sanchez. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Williams. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Please say with me, "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Thank you.
Honorable Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Members of City Council, Jenny Ybarra, Human Resource Technician. Unfortunately, the current health order continues to preclude us from recognizing in person those employees who have completed 20 years, 20 or more years of service with our city. Although they are not physically present with us this evening, thanks to our partnership with AOCT, we have the ability to still celebrate their major milestones with them and the viewing audience from their homes. It is my pleasure to begin the presentation with following employees who have completed 20 years of service. Isaac Alvarez, Water Distribution Supervisor, Water Utilities Department. James Crawford, Code Enforcement Officer II, Neighborhood Services Department. Franklin Culver, Garage Service Worker, Public Works Department. Richard Davis, Police Sergeant, Police Department. Robert Grimmels, Code Enforcement Officer II, Neighborhood Services Department. Thomas Lopez, Senior Building Inspector, Development Services Department. Joshua Morris, Police Sergeant, Police Department. Patricia Mosher, Development Specialist, City Manager's Office. Kirk Muntz, Code Enforcement Division Manager, Neighborhood Services Department. William Reedy, Water Treatment Supervisor, Water Utilities Department. Isaac Richardson, Utility Worker III, Water Utilities Department. Tonyo Turhan, Utility Worker II, Water Utilities Department. Dennis Von Norman, Maintenance Worker II, Public Works Department. Carl Wilson, Police Officer, Police Department. Next, we have the employees who have completed Next, we have the employees who have completed 25 years of service. Gary Alexis, Police Officer, Police Department. Nathaniel Browsleton, Police Sergeant, Police Department. Vicki Prosser, Council Aide, City Council. The following employees have reached 30 years. Tony Gonzalez, Utility Supervisor, Water Utilities Department. Ricardo Zapolda, Distribution Operator III, Water Utilities Department. And finally, we have one employee this quarter with 35 years of service. Delphino Soto, Waste Water Plant Operator III, Water Utilities Department. On behalf of the City of Oceanside, I offer our congratulations to everyone recognized this evening and thank them for their continued commitment to our community. Please join me in a round of applause for tonight's performance.
Next is a proclamation honoring Oceanside Police Chief Frank McCoy on his retirement. What's your best side? Is that it?
I don't have it.
Okay. Chief. Is it signed? Yeah. Chief. This gives me, it's a great honor. I am so proud to be able to stand here, to be doing this for you. I know we're going to have comments from the rest of the council as well, but I have to say, I feel like I've been with you the longest in terms of constantly giving you calls and asking for your help in the neighborhoods. And just, you know, when you first came on, I know I met with you several times, and that was January, excuse me, 2006. Was it January? Yes, it was. And we were having a lot of activity in Oceanside, and we desperately needed your leadership, especially with your background on community policing. So I'm going to go ahead and start with this proclamation, and hopefully, I mean, I asked several people for comments as well, so you're going to hear kind of a mixture, okay? So, proclamation in honor of Oceanside Police Chief Frank McCoy. Whereas, Oceanside Police Chief Frank McCoy began working for the City of Oceanside in January 2006 during a critical time. And whereas, upon assuming his duties, Chief McCoy established a new community-based policing model, reaching out to our various neighborhoods and community and business leaders for input, and selecting the best of the best officers to begin this project. And whereas, Chief McCoy's neighborhood outreach activities included officers interacting with neighborhood-based organizations at their respective meetings, and with at-risk youth at Flag Football, Basketball, and the Kick It With a Cop program. And unfortunately, they don't continue because officers ended up getting injured, but they were wonderful programs. And whereas, Chief McCoy has overseen and supported Oceanside Youth Partnership, a charter, a character-building and mentoring program designed for at-risk youth, changing the lives of many individuals and their families. And whereas, under Chief McCoy's leadership, the Police Department reinstituted the Police Department's Residence Academy, including in Spanish, a free six-week program designed to provide a greater understanding of what police work is all about, as well as creating relationships of trust and cooperation between law enforcement and the community. And whereas, Chief McCoy's leadership helped create the successful Coffee with a Cop program, bringing the public and police together in informal, neutral spaces to discuss community issues, build relationships, and drink coffee. And whereas, under the leadership of Chief McCoy, the Oceanside Police Department Explorer Program, designed for young men and women to explore all aspects of law enforcement, has been successful. And whereas, Chief McCoy was instrumental in curbing crime in the downtown area, fostering a burgeoning downtown economy, and helping to create downtown Oceanside as a premier tourist destination, and that's from Main Street, Oceanside. And whereas, Chief McCoy took on the responsibilities of being the frontline city employees, working with Oceanside's homeless population, innovatively creating homeless outreach teams, working with social workers and the Housing Department, establishing regional relationships, creating the ability for referrals to shelters and other supportive services. And whereas, there's a lot of whereas's here. And whereas, since Chief McCoy's appointment, the city has seen a 33% reduction in overall crime and a 28% reduction in violent crime. And whereas, Chief McCoy's leadership has changed the culture and diversity of the Oceanside Police Department, hiring more women, people of color, and LGBTQ individuals, as well as requiring employee diversity education and instituting police liaisons within the city's diverse communities. And whereas, after 36 years in law enforcement, Oceanside Police Chief Frank McCoy is retiring, effective December 29, 2020, a few days from now, having served as Oceanside's Police Chief for 14 years, the longest-serving police chief in the history of the department. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Esther Sanchez, on behalf of the City of Oceanside and all my colleagues here and all staff, do hereby declare December 16, 2020, as Oceanside Police Chief Frank McCoy Day in the City of Oceanside, with heartfelt gratitude and congratulations to Chief McCoy for an incredibly successful career in law enforcement and his years of dedication to our Oceanside community. Congratulations, Chief, and thank you.
Well, thank you very much. It's
I really need it legal.
[laughing] It's been a great career. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve the community of Oceanside, to serve the city council here in the City of Oceanside. A lot of good things that were said in here, but these good things are because of the good people that we have in our department. The jobs that they do for us, day in and day out. I'm so blessed to have such a dedicated staff that are committed to ensuring that Oceanside is the safest place and best place for people to not only live, shop, and raise their families. So, you know, it's, I've had a lot of good times here in the city. We've had some challenges here in the city. Some of these, actually, it's my 15th year, but some of these years could have been like dog years, but nonetheless, we got through those hard times. And again, I'd just like to say thank you very much to the citizens of this city for the opportunity to serve you as your police chief. It's been a very great experience for me, a very educational experience for me, something that I'll cherish for the rest of my life, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. Hold on. While you stand here, my colleagues would like to say a few words, okay? Go.
How you doing, Chief?
No, I'm sorry.
You're welcome. That's not the right answer. How you doing, Chief? You want to ask me?
It's a little
Okay, very good. For those of you who don't know, that's former Mayor Wood would say that. What the Chief referred to at the phone call, a number of years ago when I was still city manager, he was up here making a presentation, and I was getting kind of bored, so I called him on his phone, and his phone in his pocket starts ringing. So now I have to call him every now and again, but he's figured it out. Anyway, Chief, congratulations, and I'm going to have to call Jepson and tell him you still never moved to the city. Anyway, congratulations, Chief.
Thank you so much, Chief McCoy. What an honor. You've been a, it's crazy to say this, but you've been a police officer longer than I've been alive. So, that's, that's pretty amazing. So, I, you know, when, when I first got elected, you were one of the first meetings I had, and you really set the standard and opened my eyes to many, many things, you know. As a young, energetic, getting into this, you know, I'm still learning as I go. You really put things in perspective. So I really appreciate you for your leadership and your patience, and you've always been there to help, and you've always diligently went out of your way to get me answers, which is just an extension of just who you are as an individual. So I really appreciate you, and enjoy your retirement. Don't come back out of retirement. Enjoy it, and thank you so much.
Councilmember Ryan?
Chief, you know, it's sad to see you go. I was, you hired me 15 years ago, almost 15 years ago, and you're the only chief I'd worked for. I think it's tough to actually tell people the changes and what's happened in the city, and these aren't just a couple stats here and there, but these are real tangible differences that, those of you watching out there today, with our gang violence and other challenges we've had in the past, we're a completely different city, and a lot of that's because of your leadership. And so, I mean, the city owes you a great debt of gratitude for your leadership. The way that you've instituted these community policing teams, our relationships are better. We're still building on it. And I think one important thing that you show us is where our city's positioned in our police department going forward. I think, you know, we have one of the best agencies in the county, if not the state, and it's, it's really important to our citizens, and we really appreciate it. It's been great working for you, working with you, and I look forward to you having a great retirement. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you so much, Chief. Thank you. Next on the agenda, closed session report. Mr. Mullen?
Thank you. The city council met in closed session at 3:30 today to discuss the following items. There was no meeting on the labor negotiation item, number one. Item 2A, conference with legal counsel on existing litigation involving the NRF project owner versus City of Oceanside. The council also met on item 3A, conference with real property negotiator involving the 10 acres of land at Old Grove Road and Frazee Road. Negotiating parties, City of Oceanside and Sheldon Development. Under negotiations are the price and terms for an amendment to sell the property. Item 3B, conference with real property negotiator involving a portion of the El Corazon property. The APN is 16208251. Negotiating parties, City of Oceanside and Sudbury Development Incorporated. Under negotiations are price and terms for the lease or sell of the property. There's no reportable action under item two or item three of the closed session agenda, and again, there was no meeting on item one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mullen. Where next is on consent calendar items. I'd like to pull item number 18. Are there any other requests by my colleagues here to request, to pull anything?
I'd like to pull 16 and 17.
16 and 17? Any requests to comment from the public?
There's no members of the public wishing to comment on consent calendar items.
Okay.
Oh, and number five has been pulled from the agenda by staff and will be returned at the next council meeting on January 6.
Thank you. Councilmember Weiss?
I'll move approval of the ballot.
Thank you. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Rodriguez, Councilmember Rodriguez.
Motion approved, 4-0.
Thank you. Item number 16?
I have two items real quick. The first one, I'll just direct to the city manager. In the backup for 16, it shows that the fire department's authorized positions went up by 15 this last year. If you could just send us an email, possibly tomorrow, let us know what those positions were. And the other thing I want to highlight, it appears to me that our COVID-19 small business loan program still has a balance of about $900,000. And I know that program was somewhat successful, but it appears it's a little bit limited. Given everything that's going on, I'd like to recommend that that $900,000 be converted from a loan program to a grant program to try to help as many of these small businesses as possible. We're in a second wave of shutdowns, and I think it's dramatically impacting a number of those businesses, and anything we can do to help them stay afloat, I think we should be able to do. So I'll make a motion that we convert that $900,000, or whatever the balance is today, to a loan program, I mean, a grant program.
I have no lights. Ms. Larson?
So, Mayor
Would you need more direction as to how that would go forward?
So, Honorable Mayor and council members, understanding the direction, staff will take a look at the program, but we will need to bring an item back to council to officially approve the program. But I think I'm clear on the intent.
And on the state, I understand that the state is looking at $25,000 grants to small businesses. Do we know the status of that?
Mayor, I have not heard a recent update on the status. Our Economic Development Manager, Michelle Geller, she doesn't, she has not heard an update either. I would note that Congress is currently considering additional COVID relief. It does include another round of the Payment Protection Program funding and potentially additional funding to local governments. And so I'm hopeful that that is approved so that we can get resources into the hands of our citizens even quicker than we can make changes to our program and get it back to you. We are tracking those carefully, and I will be bringing updates or providing you with updates as that legislation moves through Congress as well. And we can check into that state-funded program as well and get you a current update.
Okay, thank you. So we have two items, items 16 and 17, ready for a vote.
Well, I have
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Just so I'm clear on this item, I fully support it, but obviously, there's some details behind that that have to come before council. So is it appropriate, like, how, you know, this is kind of urgent, so when would this come back, I guess, is what I would like to know.
Councilmember, Mayor and councilmembers, my intent would bring something at our first meeting in January, January 6, as soon as possible, because it is certainly a current urgent situation.
And at that meeting, I'm not modifying the motion. I'm assuming you're going to go over some of the criteria for the grant, you know. Obviously, we want to support the businesses that are the most impacted by this and not just kind of a free-for-all, everybody applies. I think it would be important that we can, you know, decipher between who's, you know, impacted the most and who's not, kind of a dynamic.
Councilmember, Mayor and councilmembers, as you're aware, we have funded grant programs through the Chamber of Commerce and Main Street, so we have some models in place. And those were specifically based on impact from the health pandemic and direct impact to the business operations and their revenues. And we certainly will incorporate those provisions into any recommendation we bring forward.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Okay, let's vote. This is on items 16 and 17.
Just 16. Item 16 has been approved, 4-0.
Item number 17?
And I pulled item 17, and I just want to make a comment. On page three, it shows the available cash balances and number of funds, and I noticed that the water and sewer funds have well over, have $100 million in cash balances available to them. And my only comment is that I know that they've got big projects coming, but if those cash balances remain that way, I would not be supportive of a future rate increase. That's my only comment. With that, I would move approval of the item.
Is there a second? Okay. There's a motion on the floor, and a second, please vote.
Item 17 has been approved, 4-0.
Thank you. Item 18 is approval of the revised bylaws for the Police and Fire Commission. And I was the one that pulled that, and I pulled it because we have had, in the last few months, a lot of requests and concerns voiced to council members and to the city manager's office regarding police community relations. And I see that what is being requested is a change so that the, the commission will meet a little more often, which is instead of four times a year, six times a year. And I would really like to see the Police and Fire and Police Commission truly pick up on the conversations and really address the concerns from the public. Possibly would like to see staff look at, including, including other members on the Police and Fire Commission so that we could have more diversity on that commission, or have opportunities for more diversity on that commission. And because what we have here, Police and Fire, under purpose, it does include, "The commission shall advise city council on policy matters pertaining to safety, police, fire, and other areas within the matter of public safety." Where, also, "The commission shall act to mobilize community participation to help find solutions to problems and concerns related to public safety." And see, "The commission shall make studies, reports, hold hearings, and formulate policy recommendations to the city council on matters relating to, to public safety." So I think that this is a great vehicle for us to at least start those, that dialogue. And I know, Councilmember Keim, or Deputy Mayor Keim, you are the council liaison on this, is that correct? Okay. Do you have any suggestions as well?
I think that there is ways that we can make that, we can make changes and make it more effective, more involved, more robust. I think it's going to be important, though, to hear staff's, staff's input and to see what those might look like and how to do it with something we currently have. But I think it could work well if done correctly.
Okay, and I agree. At this point, I'm voicing some recommendations to staff to come back with At this point, I'm voicing some recommendations to staff to come back with ways that this commission can be more effective, especially to addressing those issues, Black Lives Matter. There are concerns, and I feel that the community still is not, has, is still unhappy with the discussion so far. And if we could, if we could do this, use this existing commission, perhaps make it more diverse. And it might be that we might need to have them meet once a month versus once every other month. So with those comments, anyone else? Oh, Councilmember Rodriguez.
Yeah, I agree with both of you. I think there's, it's a mix of where city staff are as well as the commission and the public. But I think that's probably one of the hottest topics I've had to personally deal with through, through the election, even after I just recently had a webinar with a few churches, and they had a lot of concerns and questions still after the election, which I understand. And so, you know, my answer to them has always been, you know, we have a Police and Fire Commission, you know, when have you participated? And, and their rebuttal was, well, you guys meet like every four months, you know, like, how are we going to really get some things done? And so I agree. I think, you know, if meeting a few more times a year, if that'll help, I mean, I really think this, this type of commission with the concerns of the community, I think meeting once a month may be more appropriate, but I'll leave that on the commission and staff and Councilmember Keim. But if those items can begin to heal and be worked out and discussed, I know when I was on as a liaison, the meetings that I attended, it was, there was very few public participants. And I think they had a lot to do with the infrequency of meetings, so hopefully this will help. But I fully support both, you know, the sentiments from Mayor Sanchez and Deputy Mayor Keim on that.
Right. I mean, bottom line, the several groups have requested the city to create an independent citizens committee. And this can begin looking at the issues so that, you know, they, there can be recommendations come from the Police and Fire Commission to the council. So that's direction to staff. At this time, I will move for approval, but with that, with that direction, with those comments from all the council members here at the dais. It's a second?
Yep.
Thank you. No other comments? Please vote.
Motion approved, 4-0.
Next, under general items, we have item 19, discussion of the options to fill the vacant city council position in accordance with Council Policy 100-61, to either, one, accept applications to fill the vacancy by the February 12, 2000, excuse me, excuse me, 2021 special council meeting, or, two, call for a special election on November 2, 2021, and provide direction to staff. Mr. Navarro?
Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, Zeb Navarro, city clerk, and tonight I am presenting item number 19 regarding the city council District 1 vacancy. So tonight, staff is here to recommend that the city council discuss options to fill the vacant city council position in accordance with City Council Policy 100-61, to either, one, accept applications to fill the vacancy by the February 12, 2021 special council meeting, or to call for a special election on November 2, 2021, and provide direction to staff. So some background on how we got here, the District 1 council seat became effective as of yesterday. And pursuant to government code, the city council is required to fill the vacancy by appointment or call a special election to fill the vacancy at the next regularly scheduled election date, not less than 114 days from the call of special election. The city council must choose one of these options within 60 days of the vacancy. There are no other options other than these. Elections Code, Section 1000, provides for an election date on March 2, 2021. However, this will not provide the city clerk's office sufficient time to provide the required legal noticing as well as processing candidate paperwork. As a result, should the council choose to call a special election, the election will be conducted at the next established election date by the selection code, which is November 2, 2021. The city clerk estimates the cost of the special election would likely exceed $250,000. Since the publishing of the staff report, the registrar of voters has provided a updated cost of a range of $400,000 to $600,000 for a special election in November. In the event the city council chooses to proceed with an appointment, we propose the following schedule to ensure sufficient time for this process, and, which is today, to declare the vacancy and provide direction to proceed with an appointment. The deadline to file for an application with the city clerk's office would be Friday, January 8, by end of business day, which would be 4 o'clock PM. Then we would convene a special meeting to interview and possibly appoint a council member for the District 1 seat on January 27. If no action is taken at the January 27 meeting, we will move to the next regularly scheduled city council meeting, February 3, to discuss potential appointment and further direction. And our final date that we can meet would be on February 10, which would be a special meeting before the 60-day deadline. So tonight, staff is recommending that the city council discuss the option to fill the vacant city council position in accordance with the council policy of 100-61, to either accept applications to fill the vacancy by the February 12, 2021 special council meeting, or to call a special election on November 2, 2021, and provide direction to staff to move forward accordingly. I'm available for any questions, and we do have our acting assistant city clerk here as well, and we do have two speakers on the side.
Thank you. Let's hear from the speakers, from the public.
Our first speaker is Diane Nygaard.
Honorable Mayor and council, I urge you to call for a special election to fill this seat. The preamble to our constitution, which many of you swore an oath to defend yesterday, begins, "We, the people." That's really a profound concept, "we, the people." The change to district elections is a way to achieve broader participation in the process, to even the playing field, and to achieve more representative government, for the people to have representatives that are accountable to them and not to you, to really give voice to "we, the people." Please don't claim that the cost of an election justifies doing the wrong thing. No one knows today what a November 2021 election will cost. You just heard the worst-case estimate. That depends how many other things might go on that ballot. And you approved almost $2 million at the beginning of this meeting on the consent calendar without blinking an eye. Please listen to the voices of "we, the people," and call for a special election. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next public comment is going to be from Arlene Hammerschmidt. And we are getting her on the Zoom call here. And whenever you're ready, Arlene.
Good evening. What is that? Good evening. Arlene Hammerschmidt here. Good to see you all, actually. Congratulations to everybody. And Honorable Mayor, city council members, again, good to see you. Please make all documents related to applicants and/or candidates to fill this vacancy immediately and easily accessible to the public. An election is the most reliable method of determining who District 1 voters want to represent them and building public trust in the process. The cost of carrying out the democratic process in this country, if this country is built on, the election of our representatives, is worth it. It's worth it. And the original estimate of $250,000 was a whole lot less than a couple of items on the automatically approved consent calendar. So, you know, think about it. Automatically opting for an election, the most inclusive form of filling this vacancy, should also be considered the normal cost of doing city business. Please honor the public with an election. If your decision is to appoint instead, number one, who is the one elected council member who currently has a finger on the pulse of District 1 and knows the will of District 1 voters and represents their wishes? The person, District 1 voters elected to represent them, Esther Sanchez. Therefore, it is logical to follow the lead of Mayor Sanchez in making this decision. What organizations accurately represent District 1 stakeholders in this decision? Oceanside Justice Coalition for one, Oceanside Coastal Neighborhood Association for another, and that's just the start. Please fully accept and honor their input. Honor the public voice and ensure maximum public input by accepting the calendar recommended by our city clerk's office. How could the city assure voters that officeholders have the strongest support of their constituents and not spend a whole lot of money on primary or special elections? Consider ranked choice voting. It assures the election of candidates having the strongest support of voters. There's no primary elections needed to discover the will of the people. There are no special elections needed when the second voter is automatically, the second vote-getter is automatically appointed to the vacancies that do occur. So please consider this in your discussion. And seriously, it's good to see everybody. Thank you very much.
And that concludes the public comment.
Thank you. Question for the city attorney before I, we start the discussion on, on the dais. Why, Mr. Mullen, why is there no option for the people to require an election?
If you look at Government Code, Section 36512, it presents to you two basic options that were reviewed by the city clerk, either to appoint or to call an election within 60 days. You do have the option under subsection C, 36512, subsection C, to have an ordinance that either automatically requires an election or that requires an election upon a petition of registered voters in a requisite amount. We discussed in the memo that I sent to you along with the city manager on December 3 that Carlsbad has that type of ordinance, and that is why they actually had an election to fill the seat vacated by the resignation of Barbara Hamilton. But Oceanside has no such ordinance that allows for the gathering of signatures to compel an election, and that's the reason.
So we could create an ordinance that would allow for a third option, perhaps not at this time, according to what you're saying?
I don't believe we could get it done in time. That is an option for you. We did discuss that when we came up with the procedures for appointment under Council Policy 100, I believe it's 61. That's attached to your staff report tonight. But there was no direction at that time in 2019 to move forward with the local ordinance.
Okay. But that is something that we could direct staff to do this evening?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. First up, Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the public comment. This is not an easy position to be in as an elected official on making a decision that the people, the voters, should make. I don't think any of my colleagues on this dais will put a price tag on democracy. But my concern has nothing to do with the price tag, because I personally do not put a price tag on democracy in hearing the voice of the people. My concern is sitting here for a year without a full functioning legislative body capable of making decisions. There is the risk of 2-2 votes across the board due to differential ideas and I, different, differentiating ideas, excuse me. And I think that's what this needs to be about. This needs to be about having a fully functioning legislative body to get us through until 2022, when we can have an election as planned. And myself, and I believe it was Councilmember Keim, we listened to the public. Arlene Hammerschmidt, Joe Hill, I met you for coffee. You brought up, and we're difference on the political spectrum, but you said we need a code of ethics, we need term limits, we need a process, a formal process for appointment for our city. And guess what? We listened, and we brought it forward. And now we have a formal process that is a public process. And I look so forward to hearing your feedback, hearing your suggestions in a public process on, on what you want to see as the next appointed council member in the district. So I personally, I would like to make a motion to move forward on an appointment. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? Councilmember Weiss?
I have a question for the city clerk. The applications that are included in the packet, as people submit them, will they be posted online?
They will not be posted online as people submit them. We would prefer to have the deadline. Once the deadline has been met, we will then post all the applications online. If people, it would be just similar to how we handle the candidates that pulled papers for office. If somebody wants to call us and ask for a list, we'll provide them a list. But as far as seeing the actual applications, I think it would be fair and a little bit more transparent if we just wait for the deadline, post it after the deadline. So that way, nobody's intimidated to not apply because they see somebody's name on there. But they will be made available on the city clerk's website after the proper redaction from the city attorney's office.
Thank you. Then I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Keim?
So obviously, as an appointed council member in 2019, I was lucky enough to get appointed unanimously. I think that showed a lot for our city. I tried to be as impartial objective as a council member as I could and really show that there's, there's a good process and a good way to do it. It was also, though, I also did meet with concerned citizens that wanted a better process, and we brought one forward. And it was, it's transparent, it's clear, it's standardized. And I don't know if we're going to be able to move forward with an appointment. I think it's incumbent upon us, it's a responsible thing to do, to try and see if we can find some common ground. $400,000 to $600,000, that's $50,000 a month that that can't, for that candidate to serve in that spot until 2022. And that's really concerning, especially with our economic crisis looming. If we have, I mean, that could be 68 positions in parks and rec and afternoon programs. And these are, I know it's, you can't put a price on democracy, and that's true, but we could really have to cut things. And you have that much, $400,000 to $600,000. Now, I'm not, I don't know where the registrar figures that out or if that's high, but the low point was 400. That's a lot of money. And so I think it's, you know, tonight, we don't have to say for sure we're going to appoint tonight. We can move forward with that process and see if there's something that we can agree upon. And then if we can't, we can always call a special election. But I think it's our responsibility to do that. And this is, you know, I brought this forward when I brought that appointment process forward. I saw this coming then, and I said, I'd like to do this because it could happen in 2020. You know, maybe we could fix it by saying you have to give up your current seat if you're going to run for another seat, so that we could have had this in the last election. It could have been addressed. You know, I don't think this is a position any of us wants to be in, but it's trying to do the responsible thing and the right thing. So I think the least we can do is try to find some common ground before we immediately call a special election. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mullen?
Yeah, I just wanted to verify that the motion included the proposed schedule that's outlined on page two of the staff report.
Right. Quick question on that. Is that outlined? I mean, that's staff's recommendation, incorrect?
Yes. It's staff's recommendation. We, we looked at the calendar and tried to come up with something feasible and...
As the fastest we could productively do this, including the public and all that. This is...
I mean, we could do it faster, but I think it's the most responsible.
We also have to factor in the holidays in there as well because of Christmas and New Year's.
Absolutely. I totally agree. Okay, thank you.
I have one more question, too. Mayor Sanchez?
Yes, Deputy Mayor Keim?
So I just want to make this clear for everyone tonight, that we, you know, if we do pass this motion, this does not, this does not mandate us to do an appointment, correct?
No, it starts the process, and so applications would be due under this schedule on January 8. And so if you're unable to select a candidate, then we would be compelled to call a special election at the end of the process. I think the, the date we put here is February 10, really, because that's a normal Wednesday, but we would have... is February 10th, really, because that's a normal Wednesday. But we would have technically, I think, until the 12th or 13th. But we'd like it done by the 10th, so.
Is, is that the best way to keep our options open at this point and work through the process?
If you want to entertain the possibility of an appointment, this is the, I think, the most appropriate process. You could call a special, you know, tell us to prepare an election tonight. But if you want to entertain the idea of having an appointment, this would initiate that process.
I think that Deputy Mayor Keim was asking if there could be a decision later to set this for an election.
Absolutely, there could be.
Up until when?
The latest date, I think, is February 12th by our calendar, but, but the Wednesday of that week is the 10th.
Okay. No one else is wishing to speak? Maybe my comments will, will cause other, other speakers. I, I feel very strongly that we need to work on transparency and trust in the city council. We've had a rough year, and we've actually had three appointments in three years. This would be four in three years because of a number of circumstances. I would say that if we had had a special election set for the mayor, the mayor's position when Jim Wood resigned, that probably would have cut it down to two, or actually just one. And that would be the, the city clerk. Because that, having that in transitioning from at-large to, to bi-district elections, it didn't cause the situation just in Oceanside. It caused it in Carlsbad and other places where you had to decide whether or not, if you were an off-year, whether to run or stay on. And for me, and, and I am, the reason why my, my election as mayor is causing this vacancy. I had, at that time, wanted to run for mayor, but we, we decided on an appointment, and that was when we appointed Mr. Weiss, Councilmember, now Councilmember Weiss, to that position. And it became kind of a domino effect. So, I would ask us to consider, going forward, that issue. Incumbency is a very strong, as we saw during the last election, incumbency is a very strong thing when you run for election, when you stand for election. I would like us, at the very least, to consider giving direction to come up with an ordinance. Generally, I've seen ordinances where if you have more than, something like what happened to Jim Wood, if you have more than two years left, that you would have to stand for election if you are appointed. And I think that actually happened to Mr. Roy. Didn't you have to stand for election, Mr. Roy?
I had to.
Yeah. Could you put your mic on?
Yes, it was the appointment for the first two years, and then the position was open for anybody to run. So, I ran for the city treasurer and won and filled the last two years.
Right. So, I would like us to consider, at the very least, giving direction to staff to come up with an ordinance that would allow for the people to be able to call, to, to do a petition, to request an election in, for public, for trust and transparency purposes. I've asked several attorneys, fellow attorneys, and they feel that this issue about whether or not the people, even with, with what we have, is, would stop a petition from going forward. And my, the response has been, this is, this would probably be a case of, you know, a first case to be going forward. So, that's totally interesting. I don't, I don't know if, if there is going to be anything, but I think going forward, we need to provide people with the sense that, yes, we're considering everyone. Councilmember Rodriguez?
So, is, is that just an ordinance, Mr. Mullen, or is that a, is that a charter amendment that would require a vote?
Well, I guess it's, depends what's in the ordinance. So, if you want to have an ordinance that allows for the public in the future, and I'm assuming you're not talking about this vacancy, but in the future, that if there were to be a vacancy, the people could gather signatures to compel an election, that's an ordinance. The government code says that you can adopt an ordinance to do that. But in the case of, I would say, on Mr. Roy's requirement to stand for election at the midway point, that's already in the government code right now. So, I don't think something like that would have to be addressed in, in a local ordinance, because it's already set forth in Government Code Section 36512.
So, the people could have done a petition for mayor, to fill the mayor's vacancy? Back then, it was over two years.
No, you have to have a local ordinance that allows for the gathering of signatures under, on the same government code section I mentioned before. The people's right to gather signatures to compel an, an election is, you have to have, the city has to have an ordinance providing for that as an option.
Thank you. Any, any input on that? Giving direction to staff to come up with an ordinance, allowing for the public to do a petition? Deputy Mayor Keim?
I'd, I'd be more comfortable asking for a, a memo outlining what other cities have in options and how we go forward with doing that. I'd also like to address other issues, you know, something during our, I don't know, I don't remember if it was during the ethics council meeting or the one where we had the policy. I'd like to see if there's any cities that require you to vacate a seat if you're going to run for something else. And also might cut down on, you know, 12 people running for one seat and get someone with a majority in. So, I just, I'd like to explore that as well, if we could do that together and just list different ways that we can have a better process. I think that would be-
Right.
To, to look at the entire process and see what we could do better, because-
So, if you vacate, then you create another vacancy?
That's on the election that you're running for the next office. So, if the District One seat would have been on the November ballot, and I don't know if that's possible, but it'd be something. And then we would, you'd save the money, you wouldn't have to deal with other ordinance, so.
I have a question. I have a question. I might solve this. So-
Are you finished with your comments, Deputy Mayor Keim?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Could, could the voters of Oceanside do a ballot initiative to create this ordinance?
Yes.
But why would we do that?
If it's a, I'm saying it's a concern. I guess it's an option for the voters, if this is important to them.
Why don't we ask the public to weigh in on this by sending in emails to us about whether or not we should have such an ordinance and set this for a, another, a future council meeting?
I'm fine with the memo, just outlining from staff what other cities are doing in that process. And did you want to add to, to Mayor Sanchez's request? I know you, you listed a couple of things. Did you want additional information on that?
No, I would accept it.
Yeah, right. What, I guess my point is, how does this get to the public, and how does the public weigh in? We're, we're kind of committing the same situation by not, by asking for an internal memo, and then there is no input from the public. So, how do we provide for public input? Deputy Mayor?
So, the way I would see it is a broad memo that says, how can we streamline this process? See what, what changes we can make, and then have those listed in a report, and we look at it, and then we can choose a motion if we want to enact any of those. So, we have a list of things, of actions we can take. So, instead of just saying, tonight, we want to do this going forward and this ordinance, why don't we see what other cities have done, do some research, and see if there's an appropriate solution for Oceanside? I think that would be the most prudent way forward.
Okay. I, I feel very strongly that we need to have the public be able to weigh in on this. We received several emails requesting that this be placed on the ballot, including from the League of Women Voters. So, this isn't just two, two speakers at tonight's meeting, but also several emails. And it, I, I feel very strongly that we need to allow the public to, this right of the referendum. So, I'm hearing that there is no support for that. I don't see what a memo would do, actually, because it's just going to be a memo, and then it's going to be forgotten. And that is what my biggest concern is. I don't see that there is any real interest in allowing for this third option to go forward. Deputy Mayor Keim?
I, I think a memo shows us direct options that we can take. Instead of, we're, we're asking for something very vague for an ordinance, let's see what's out there, and then it'll show us. It'll be in, in the council, in the, in the minutes, just like any other item would be, and we can see what options there are. And then if we want to make a motion, we can do that.
Yeah, the minutes, if you've noticed, the minutes are up and down, not a whole lot of direction. The minutes used to be very detailed, which, which meant that they were behind several years. That was in the early 2000s.
I misspoke. I'm in our agenda packet.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Look, I bring a lot of great ideas to this body, and you guys always pull the memo card. So, I'm pulling it tonight, okay? We have a motion and a second. Let's vote.
Okay. I won the race. I get to say that. No, kidding aside, I, I am very concerned about us going, moving forward and kind of leaving behind some of the friction that we've had last year and some of the, you know, real concerns that were brought up by the, by the community. I mean, having gone, still going through COVID, and having gone through a very rough time of it during the, you know, when the country was in turmoil over watching a black man being killed on national TV. We still need to heal, and we still need to be able to allow for the public to be able to choose their representative. It is, District One actually happens to be a very special district in that it is the, one of the two that has a high, a high number of Latino and other minorities living in there. You know, it is, it is a very, very critical situation. So, I'm asking you to please consider bringing this back for consideration. We could, we could give direction to staff to come up with the different ideas. And then, you know, it, it doesn't, it wouldn't have to be something that we needed to do within a month or two. It could take a little longer. But I really feel that this is something that, I know I've been asked that, this question and been polled, well, are we going to be able to, to choose our own representative to fill this seat? I mean, that, I have not had one person say, let's hurry up and appoint someone. So, no other discussions. Please vote.
Just for clarification, this is a vote only on Councilmember Rodriguez's motion to move forward the appointment process.
Right, it's staff's recommendation, I think, is what he was moving.
Okay.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
The process of appointment, her staff's recommendation, correctly discussed.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Motion approved, 3-1. Sanchez, no.
Thank you. Item number 19, excuse me, 20, receipt of the downtown Oceanside Property and Business Improvement District's annual report for 2020 through 2021. Ms. Geller? Economic Development Manager.
It's a public hearing?
It's 6 o'clock, so we have a time-specific-
All right, yes.
Public hearing.
Thank you for reminding me. Okay, we're going to go ahead and return to item number 19 after the public. One item that we have for public hearing, and that is item 21, adoption of a resolution setting tax rates for cannabis businesses in accordance with Chapter 34 of the Oceanside City Code. I'd like to open this public hearing and start with disclosures.
Staff and a letter from one of the attorneys representing the group, and that's it. Staff and the public.
Staff and public?
Staff and public.
Thank you. Do we have any correspondence or petitions?
No correspondence or petitions have been received by the city clerk.
Thank you. So, we're beginning with Assistant City Manager, Michael Gosman.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers, Michael Gosman, Assistant City Manager. Before you today is a relatively simple question, and that is, after the passage of Measure M, what rate should be set on cannabis business activities? Staff is recommending the following for manufacturing, 4% tax rate, distribution, 3%, nurseries, 2%, cultivation, 2.5%, and retail at 5%. The background on this, as you know, in March of 2018, the city council introduced an ordinance that allowed certain cannabis-related business activities. And then in August of 2020, council placed a measure on the ballot to allow, that would allow taxation of cannabis business activities. And then in November, Measure M passed with 62% of the vote. Staff, to come up with the recommended tax rates, did get the services of a consultant, HDL, to prepare an analysis. We presented that analysis to you in August. The resulting study recommended a taxation program that is fair and not overly burdensome to the cannabis industry. And then it recommended tax rates that are designed to be, to provide sufficient revenue to offset the impacts of the cannabis industry without compromising the success of our local cannabis businesses. Again, the slide here shows the adopted tax range under the ordinance and then the recommended initial rate. It does have HDL's estimated annual revenues, but that is once all businesses are up and running. And I would not expect to see that in the initial year or the initial, first initial couple of years. The ordinance that was approved by voters does allow the council to adjust the tax rates within the specific ranges. It requires remittance of amount dues and arrears on a monthly basis with interest and penalties for failure, failure to timely pay. And then it specifies that violation of the new tax provisions is a misdemeanor. Tax would be implemented January 1st, 2021. Estimated revenues eventually are estimated at 1.9 million, but as I stated, initially, years' revenues will be much lower until businesses get started up. Tax proceeds can be spent for any lawful general government purpose, including enforcement efforts against illegal cannabis businesses. And to wrap up, staff recommends that the city council adopt a resolution setting tax rates for cannabis businesses in accordance with Chapter 34 of the Oceanside City Code. I'm here, and other staff are here to answer questions.
Thank you. Any public?
Yes, we do have members of the public on this. We have two speakers. Our first speaker is Becky Rapp, to be followed by Gracie Morgan. And Mrs. Rapp, whenever you're ready. You are unmuted.
Good evening, Oceanside City Council. My name is Becky Rapp. I'd like to take this opportunity to congratulate Mayor Sanchez and returning city council members Keim and Weiss. Thank you for your hard work over the past several years. We look forward to the future years of service. As a parent and youth group mentor, I would like to express my concern for the very conservative tax rate being recommended. Instead of being unnecessarily lenient on marijuana businesses, I would respectfully suggest that more attention be placed on the real cost of marijuana businesses in Oceanside, to youth and families, and to the staff and police department. The proposed tax rate should reflect that. It's not a secret that the state of California is cultivating 10 times the amount of pot it can consume. Growers and dispensaries are undoubtedly sending their pot out of state. And did you know that pot sold to out-of-state buyers where marijuana is deemed illegal collects more than three times as much money than selling it locally? I would also like to remind you that marijuana is a cash-only business, so there is no need to give marijuana businesses preferential treatment. If you're going to support marijuana in our city, then it is only wise to tax them at the highest level, creating a financial buffer zone. Unforeseen expenses will come your way as crime rates rise and mental health issues soar. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public comment is from Gracie Morgan. Our next public comment is from Gracie Morgan. And you are unmuted, so whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Hello, Council. How are you doing this evening? I'm Gracie Morgan, the Director of Operations for Medleaf Delivery, and I'm here just asking a simple question about this tax that's being proposed this evening. I'd like to, we are tax pro, and we're looking forward to being able to contribute back to the city of Oceanside in the way that we've proposed prior. All that we would like to ask is if the council would please direct staff to agendize the item of discussing adult use for medicinal cannabis license holders in the city of Oceanside for the next council hearing.
Does that conclude your comments, Ms. Morgan? Oh, she logged off, okay. So that concludes the public comment on this item.
Thank you. Would you like to respond, Mr. Gosman, to any of the comments by the public?
No, I have no.
Could you, could you answer the question? I think there was basically a question, why, why are we, why is staff recommending the lower tier?
So staff is recommending rates based on a survey that we did amongst other cities in San Diego County. It's finding that, striking that balance between making sure that we have adequate revenues to do the enforcement and take care of some of the other issues that cannabis-related businesses might bring, but also not continuing to force business that has historically been underground to stay underground because of overly burdensome tax rates. And that's the balance that we sought to strike, and I feel like the rates that are recommended do strike that.
Okay, I'm going to close this portion of the public hearing. And any comments? Councilmember Rodriguez? Any questions for staff?
So I heard, I heard the public comment and the concern about impacts, and I just want to reiterate my understanding, and it's also staff's understanding. And it's pretty common knowledge when you really investigate and familiarize yourself with, with the industry. 75% of cannabis transactions right here in the city of Oceanside are done illegally by illegal operators that obtain it, sell it, get it in the hands of our children. The flavors, the gummy bears, everything you can think of, they don't give a crap about regulation, they don't care about taxation, none of that. And so those impacts, unfortunately, have transposed themselves on legal operators that want to open and follow the rules and spend the hundreds of thousands of dollars on reports and licensing and regulation and go through the public process. And so if we're going to crack down on the illegal operators that are getting the gummy bears to our kids, the cookies to our kids, the joints to our kids, then we need to have local regulation. That's the only way we're going to combat this. The more taxation, you know, we can't control the state, we can only control what we do in our own backyard, the more taxation only forces more individuals to go get it cheaper somewhere else. And so we have to be smart about that. We have to really, you know, if we're serious about cracking down on the illegal operators that are getting this in front of our kids, then we need to just face reality that local regulation and giving the freedoms to those who want to do it legally, let alone the testing and the, you know, the, the public safety dynamics that are involved when you go through the legal process versus the black market, or the illegal market, excuse It's important, it's very, very important, and that's near and dear to my heart. I've kind of given my own personal testimony on that, I'll save you that tonight. But I have a passion for, you know, stopping the illegal operators in our city that is getting cannabis laced with who knows what to our kids and to our youth. And a part of that is having strong and viable local regulation. And with, with the revenues created not only to mitigate the impacts, we're also going to, you know, I would like to see funding go in, in working with the Oceanside Unified School District and the five school districts that are within our jurisdiction to educate our youth and to create sting operations to really go after the illegal operators. And so if we're going to, if we're going to create some change when it comes to cannabis, we need to go after those that are doing it illegally and not after those who are seeking to do it legally. I, I hate taxes. I don't, I don't, you know, I think the government takes enough taxes from us. I respect staff's recommendations on, you know, the starting point. I personally would like to see him, you know, the taxation even lower, to allow the legal businesses, the ones who are doing it right, to get up and running. Because again, we can charge these guys an arm and a leg, but that's only reinforcing the illegal market. We have to really comprehend that. And so I'll stop talking, but I want to hear what my other colleagues have to say, but I'm, I'm, you know, in favor of supporting this. I would actually just like to see lower taxation on the front end, and we'll go from there.
Are you moving adoption?
What's that?
Are you making the motion to adopt resolution?
No, I actually want, I want to hear some more feedback, and I also want to touch base on future cannabis items that staff can bring back before us potentially, and I want to get other feedback on that from my colleagues. So I'll hear what you guys have to say, and then we can.
Okay, I don't have any lights yet, but I did want to follow up on the question from the public. My understanding that the reason why it was being set on the lower end of, of the scale was because we are just, they are just, the businesses are just now beginning and that perhaps at a later time, the rate could be increased. My, my personal concerns, and I think as a council member and as someone who has lived in the East Side community, is that the illegality of cannabis up until recently made tremendous impacts, very, very negative impacts, especially within the Latino community. The criminalization has caused many young men and women to end up in jail, in prison. As a former deputy public defender and hearing that once upon a time you could go to prison for one joint because that was considered a felony at the time, really just created huge, huge impacts in our community for many, many years, especially within the African-American community, the Latino community, poverty neighborhoods, but especially communities of color. So for me, it's about ensuring that the impacts are addressed. Now that there is decriminalization, to, to ensure that we are able to address issues within the community regarding the need for counseling, the need for ensuring that youth that are not able to go to a store or, you know, possibly, the, the concern is that there is going to be an increase of cannabis products in the community because of, of the, the shops. So how can we ensure that the needs of the community, the impacts are addressed? And so that would be my desire to see funds that are, that are produced from the, from the tax and fees, that, that these issues be addressed. And we have Deputy Mayor Keim.
I am concerned with unintended consequences of marijuana and some of the issues that we're going to have. However, I think we have adopted a, a fairly reasonable and probably successful way of regulating these businesses, and I think if we overtax legal business and we make it too burdensome, these places that are following the rules and trying to be good neighbors and not sell to children are going to get sidelined, and you're going to have irresponsible operators from other parts of the county, unincorporated areas, and I don't think that's right either. I do, I am concerned. We had a, an item come before us in the last several council meetings I was not supportive of, a manufacturer with some concerning things I had seen. So I'm not afraid to say no, but if we're going to have this throughout the county, and right now we have delivery in our city, and we have one company who's trying to do it and trying to do it responsibly, and if we make that too burdensome, I, from what I'm, I'm aware that they can just, people will just call and get it from somewhere else. So I think it's something we need to address if we're going to be able to provide proper oversight of these and actually encourage responsible businesses to operate instead of other ones from throughout the city or throughout the county. I think tonight, it's too soon to bring a motion to change that next council meeting, especially with our reduced staffing levels, but maybe the city manager might have some more clarification. I know when we had our first business open, we were going to come back with, staff was going to come back with reports or information on how that went. Was there a timetable for that?
Mayor, Councilmember, Mayor and councilmembers. You know, I don't recall. It may have been within 12 months, but I'll have to confirm, but the businesses, we only have one business fully up and operating, the other one is just in the process. We have a few more just in the permitting process, and so it is very much in its infant stages. We don't have a lot of data yet, but I certainly can follow up and provide that information to you.
I think that would be appropriate way to address it is to get a real comprehensive rundown of what worked, what didn't. That's why we wanted to do the incremental process in the first place and then give, you know, if we do have organizations that are doing it correctly, keeping it away from children, not marketing it to children, that we don't push them out and let irresponsible businesses come into our city. So I, I think it's definitely something that we have to address. So I'd be more than willing to address that at, at a certain time with a more detailed staff report from police, code enforcement. I'm going to just see how everything's working together. Thank you.
Are you moving to adopt the resolution?
Yeah.
No, no, it hasn't. No motion on the table yet.
If everyone's spoken, I'll make.
No. Councilmember Weiss?
How many manufacturer businesses do we have running right now?
Can we bring up the, I have a slide up. Yeah, so we, right now, we have five active manufacturer licenses.
And distributors?
Distributors, we have four active licenses and one pending.
Thank you. And I agree with, we need, we need appropriate regulation and we need appropriate revenues to fight the illegal market. I also think as we're moving forward, because we're going to have an opportunity to address these fees, probably on an annual basis when we do our annual fee review, I'm going to make the motion to adopt the resolution, but I'm going to recommend that for the manufacturers, at least for this next year, we go to the bottom rate of 2.5% and distributor at 2%. Then we can evaluate how much money we're coming in.
Sorry.
I was going to say that we can evaluate what's coming in, this is Deputy Mayor Keim said, give us the information on how much money's coming in, what the issues are, what the problems are, what the concerns are, and what we need to fix.
And just to clarify and to actually just emphasize the earliness of the, the nascent stages of this, I did state that those were licensed. Jonathan, through the magic of technology, just told me that there are no manufacturers actually operating, they're only licensed. So we're still very early on.
So I think if we, if we started at the lowest rate, then I think that should be a, to me, that would be acceptable.
So that would be 2.5 for manufacturing from, what was that again?
From, from the four, and then distributor from three down to two.
Yeah, correct.
Those are the lowest adopted tax.
So that's a change to staff's recommendation regarding the resolution?
Yes.
And Councilmember Rodriguez?
I'm a farmer, so I'm going to ask for a lower rate for our farmers. I would like to see the 1.5. Well, on our report's different, but I'd like to see the farmers at 1.5 getting out the gate. And I would actually like, as a part of this motion, to establish a realistic timeline for staff to put some more data together for us to have an open discussion on this versus the memo route. You know, if it's 90 days, if it's six months, like I, we really need to, you know, if we're serious about having this local control, instead of leaving that open-ended, I would like to have something agendized with a staff report and recommend, even some recommendations on, on what they're seeing, you know, to include some, you know, you know, if we have a good operator that's doing delivery, you know, why, why would they not be able to deliver to adults? Because San Diego is, they're, they're delivering here every day. And so, you know, those are some things that we really need to take into consideration. And I think if we have it on the agenda and staff can really put some information together, and I'll ask the city manager on timelines that they think they can, they can realistically put some stuff together, but I think we really need to have another public meeting to be able to discuss this.
Okay, is there a second to Councilmember Weiss's motion?
I'll second.
Before, okay, so now we have a motion on the floor. And so now.
He's going to amend. And I'll include the cultivation at the 1.5. So they.
And that's from what, again, from?
Yeah, it's a current, the recommended was four for manufacturer, three for distributor, two for nursery, two and a half for cultivation, and five for retail.
Okay, so there's a second to the, so, okay, so there was a, let's do this, because you had seconded his motion before.
There was an original motion on the floor from Councilmember Weiss to, for the recommendation to change the manufacturers to the bottom 2.5% and the distributors to the 2%, seconded by Councilmember Keim. Councilmember Weiss modified his motion to include the cannabis cultivation.
Can't modify the motion, it would have to be by amending the motion.
I'm sorry, amending the motion for cultivators to go to 1.5% and Councilmember Keim, who seconded the original motion, agreed to that. So that's where we're at right now.
So he seconded the amendment?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right, any other comments? What would, how would the numbers change with respect to what would be produced?
In terms of revenue produced?
Yes.
I would have to, I would have to report back and do some math, and actually, I'd probably want to talk to our consultant at HDL.
Right. Were the original numbers an attempt to try to meet the costs?
The original numbers, what HDL provided was a range. What we provided really was a balance, as I stated, a balance between the cost, but also the impact, recognizing as counsel stated that the realities of what overly burdensome tax rate was. So it was a compromise. It wasn't necessarily, as you would see in, this is a general tax, so it can be used for any lawful government purpose. This isn't, this is different than if you have a program and you're trying to get user fees and charges to pay for that.
Right, right, right.
That's not what this is.
City Manager, Dan Larson?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to clarify, the numbers in the staff report of the minimum rates were incorrect. The correct numbers were provided to you by memo and are shown on the screen. The minimum rate for manufacturing is 2%, not 2.5% under the ordinance. And then secondly, I also wanted to point out in the staff report, HDL did analyze the minimum rates for projected revenue, and at 2.5% for manufacturing, that was $360,000. At 2% for distribution, that was $300,000, and at 1.5% for cultivation, that was $180,000. That would be, though, when those applications that are currently in our process are fully permitted and up and operating. That would not be immediate revenue, but future revenue as those businesses become up and operating.
Right, and this would be coming back to the council on a yearly basis?
I do recall there was prior direction, we would report back regularly, and as Councilmember Weiss pointed out, we would need to do regular updates to our fee ordinance as well if there were to be the adjustments. And relative to the request, if there's a particular timeline, we can certainly report back in six months' time with a status update and then annually thereafter, or as council would please.
Would six months be sufficient? When do you expect to see the applicant, applications moving online?
So we do have the two CUPs that already have been issued, one business or two businesses.
Right, just because you were basing the, the amounts for the revenues based on assuming that they would be going forward, right?
And, and that's all the applications we have current licenses for, and a number of those are still a way out in the application process. I do not think they would be up and operating in six months, but that would give us at least our, the businesses that have started up, how they're doing and what we're seeing so far.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
We have a motion in a second. I just wanted to clarify my question to you, Ms. Larson, on, you know, I think six months was, we wanted to see the delivery service up and running for six months. I think we've passed that threshold. Maybe we can do a few more months, but I, you know, is it realistic just from the sake of delivery that we could come back and come back and have a public meeting with respect to cannabis and how they've been operating and some of the numbers? And then, you know, being able to potentially move on modifications to our local ordinances and policies surrounding cannabis businesses? I mean, is 90 days enough time?
Ninety. I thought I heard six months.
Councilmember, mayor and council members, whatever direction council provides, we will strive to attain it. However, we do have a lean staff with a lot of competing priorities, particularly right now in the COVID environment. We are still operating under some constraints. And it would be challenging, but we could do it. Six months would be preferable.
Yeah, let's do six months.
Perfect. So yeah, I would just like to make a second motion that we have a public process in six months and we can talk about the taxes and we can also talk about, you know, potential modifications to, to our local cannabis ordinance.
Well, six months for an update and status, right?
Mayor and council members, my understanding would be that we would agendize an item to provide an update and potential recommendations. And of course, council could provide whatever direction they would like at that point.
At that hearing, right. Okay. No other lights? Please vote.
Motion approved for zero.
Thank you. Moving back to item number 19. Excuse me, 20. I keep wanting to say 19. Receipt of the downtown Oceanside Property and Business Improvement Districts and a report for 2020, 2021. Back to you, Ms. Geller.
Excuse me, point of order. Did we need to make a motion, Mr. Mullen, on the report back in six months as a public meeting?
I think that was already, I think the city manager already has that direction.
We're good. Okay, perfect. Yeah. Just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. Michelle Geller, Economic Development Manager, here to present the Downtown Property Business Improvement District First Annual Report. The recommendation tonight is to receive and file the Downtown Oceanside Property and Business Improvement District's annual report for 2020, 2021. For some background, the Downtown Oceanside Property and Business Improvement District, or P-Bid, and the ability to levy assessments on properties within the P-Bid boundaries was approved by City Council in August of last year. In December of last year, the P-Bid Governing Committee was formed and Main Street Oceanside was designated as the organization to oversee the P-Bid activity. This annual report is a requirement of the P-Bid's management district plan and will be presented to City Council at the end of each year of the P-Bid's operation. The city owns 12 properties within the P-Bid boundaries, the map of which is shown here, with the assessments on those properties totaling about $83,000. In total, there are approximately 192 properties within the boundaries that pay a special assessment based on the type and size of the property. And the formula is in the management district plan that you have. The formation of the P-Bid was driven by the desire on the part of the city, Main Street Oceanside, residents and businesses in the downtown area, to enhance safety and cleanliness, improve the customer, resident and visitor experience, retain and retain and attract business and investment. The special assessments collected each year total a little over $370,000, which makes up the P-Bid's annual budget. And activities are divided into these five buckets, with the majority going into maintenance and safety. Work done by the P-Bid is, has to be above and beyond work that the city or other organizations already do. As described in the annual report, P-Bid activities that would have started earlier this year were delayed due to COVID. The governing committee had just begun to meet and get started on the work plan when the initial stay home orders were issued in March. So when the pandemic hit, there was actually even a discussion of suspending the P-Bid altogether, just to provide some relief to property owners. But the, the property owners were surveyed and overwhelmingly, they decided to, to move forward with the P-Bid, knowing that, you know, this safety, maintenance, new cleanliness activities would actually position downtown Oceanside for a really strong comeback, you know, once, once COVID had passed. So Main Street Oceanside basically pivoted to virtual meetings and work continued. These are the activities included in the 2020, 2021 work plan for the P-Bid. The sidewalk pressure washing is actually starting in a couple weeks, on January 4th. A downtown ambassadors program where there'll be ambassadors to direct visitors and also handle transient issues, kind of getting them services. Well, an RFP will be issued soon for that. And then an emergency tree trimming and cleanup fund was established after some recent storms and the Santa Ana winds. These activities all fall under the maintenance and safety category. And then the P-Bid also has activities planned in the economic development and capital improvement category, including a wayfinding sign program and a monument or landmark sign for which an RFP was released earlier this month. The RFP is publicly available on the Main Street Oceanside's website with a closing date of January 13. And the sign's proposed location is across Pierview Way at Tremont, and it's intended to be kind of a photo op sign, a placemaking sign that is sort of in the heart of downtown Oceanside and, you know, really creates a sense of, of place and pride for Oceanside. Due to its scope, this specific project will be a multi-phase, multi-year project that includes significant community and city council input. So to conclude, the recommendation is to receive and file the P-Bid annual report for 2020, 2021. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any public comments?
No public on this item.
Thank you. Is there a motion to receive and file the report? Motion is second. Please vote.
Thank you.
Motion approved for zero.
Okay. Do we have any items and public comments on off agenda items, advanced requests to speak?
Yes, we do. On item number 23, we only have two speakers.
Okay, so nothing on item 22, so 23, yes.
On item number 23, our first speaker is Arlene Hammerschmidt, to be followed by Cindy Rocco.
Excuse me. Good evening again. Congratulations to all of our newly elected office holders. History was made in this election many times over. Please, let's go forward together and focus on what we have in common, what we can agree on, and staying open to what may be new and unfamiliar ways of doing things. And please, including everyone in the decision process intentionally, with respect toward each other, a mutual respect. Also, congratulations. It was very refreshing to see the reflection of Oceanside's beautiful diversity in the selection of those offering the invocations and closing prayer at last night's meeting, and the selection of Cantor Cornet for tonight's invocation. This is a really good start, and I'm looking forward to the next couple of years. Good to see y'all. Have a good weekend.
Thank you, Arlene.
And we're going to see if Cindy is on the line. We're going to see if, if she is. Cindy, are you on the line?
Yes, I am.
Okay, perfect. Whenever you're ready.
Okay, thank you. First, I just want to say congratulations to all the newly elected officials. I just hope that we can all just lead with our hearts and kindness and just bring this, you know, use that as our compass going forward. In that, I also want to say thank you to staff, because right now, you guys are all over the streets of Oceanside just doing things. And I just want to say thank you, because I know they're just all over. I see the sewers being cleaned out. I see everything going on. And it's just, it's really awesome. And congratulations to Delphino for 35 years with the city. That is outstanding. Thank you, Chief McCoy. Congratulations. But the main purpose that I am here for is to pace something forward. You know, you know, COVID's been pretty scary and, you know, pretty humbling, you know, but I've been down this road before. So, you know, I've been on the floor before. And something happened in this community that just really, it's just amazing. And my heart is so full, and I don't think it could ever be any fuller. And, you know, my pride turns away the knocks on the door. But three times knocks came, and one was an open checkbook to pay my water bill. The second one was $500 in gift cards from every SouthO restaurant to make sure that I had food. And I said, no, no, no. You know, you know, the one thing you learn when you've been on the, you've had your knees on the ground, that you know, no matter what, no matter how much you think you need something, there's always somebody else that needs something more. So I couldn't accept that, you know? And that was kind of hard, because you know, it was like, oh, wow, those are amazing places. But, and then, of course, the third knock came as an anonymous neighbor or group of neighbors made a payment of $300 towards my water bill, you know? And so now I'm here simply to say thank you so much and to pay it forward. And I've paid forward to, to separate organizations and individuals in our community that I think have just an amazing, every day, every day today, yesterday, every day boots on the ground effort in hitting our underserved communities, from the homeless to our, our vulnerable youth. And the two organizations are livedexperiences.org, which is under Oscar Nortega's leadership. And I will be Venmoing you $150 tonight. And also to Vanessa Graziano, to the Oceanside Homeless Resource, for the amazing things that you've been doing. And I just, you guys are boots on the ground, grassroots, true locals doing amazing things. And I just want to say thank you so much. And thank you, SouthO. And, well, Merry Christmas to everyone. And Frank, maybe we can go do some coffee after the 29th. Okay, thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it. And congratulations to all.
Thank you, Cindy. Stay safe.
And that concludes the public comment on off agenda items.
Thank you. Did you want to speak on, okay, great. Okay. So going through the rest of the agenda, mayor and our council member items, we have none. Adoption of ordinances, we have none. So now we're down to general council member comments. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes, just really, really quickly. The Oceanside Police Department has amazing resources available for neighborhood watch programs. And so different areas in, in my district have, you know, above the norm calls for service. And so I've had several meetings. One of those neighborhoods is Fireside Park area. It's right near the riverbed, a lot of transient related calls for service. And we've been working closely together to make a lot of changes, one of which is an organized neighborhood watch program. I'm going to post it on my Facebook, but it is going to be tomorrow from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. I'll post a link. If you are in Fireside, definitely tune in. I will also be holding effective 2021, save the date. I will have a District Two Town Hall on January 21st. That is a Thursday. And I will post those details on my Facebook page as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other council member comments? No? Okay, I have a couple. I was going to say, now I have the mic. No. First of all, I wanted to, there were some comments that were forwarded by Wayne Godinay and his family. First about Chief Frank McCoy. Over the years, I've had the pleasure of working with officers of the Oceanside Police Department, primarily by way of their commuting, community policing efforts. Although my knowing, Chief McCoy was mostly in passing at a council meeting, celebration of life memorial for victims of gang violence, coffee with a cop, a Samoan cultural event, or cup stacking with kids in the park. Those brief moments have added up over at least a dozen years, of which one becomes familiar with the leadership style of the person at the top, Chief McCoy. Through the neighborhood policing team, I can say personally, the many officers we have met and worked with have always conducted themselves professionally and with a willingness to find common ground with the community and to seek solutions to problems. For our volunteers, you will continue to be remembered by the professional standard you set for your officers and personnel who reflect your leadership on a daily basis. Thank you, Chief McCoy, and enjoy your retirement, Wayne Godinay and family, plus also on behalf of the Save Our Streets Oceanside Samoan Cultural Committee. Wayne also provided, would like to announce the Save Our Streets 14th Annual Cannibalite Vigil. The annual Save Our Streets Cannibalite Vigil held simultaneously in four Oceanside neighborhoods on December 20th at 6, will be held at, on December 20th at 6:33 p.m. with a one-minute moment of silence and a prayer. It will not be held in public, although this is our 14th year. The annual vigil is held in memory and in honor of OPD Officers Dan Besant and Tony Sepatella, both shot and killed in gang violence while in the line of duty. All innocent victims of gang, drug, or domestic violence, along with families, friends, and loved ones left behind, are honored as well. This Sunday, December 20th at 6:33 p.m., Save Our Streets members will light their candles, followed by a one-minute moment of silence and a prayer. Due to COVID, each vigil will be held privately in homes and family gatherings. No Zoom, Skype, or live stream, just personal. SOS invites any and all residents to join in on Sunday at 6:33 p.m. for at least one minute, a one-minute moment of silence. Save Our Streets is a local grassroots volunteer group formed immediately after the shooting death of OPD Officer Dan Besant on December 20th, 2006. In your thoughts and prayers, please include Mr. Tony Maiba, longstanding and active member of SOS, as well as the Oceanside Samoan Culture Committee, who passed away recently. I'd also like to acknowledge George Coburn, who is 101 years old. He celebrated, he is a survivor of Pearl Harbor. And he celebrated alone at home, or actually with, with the staff at the Ivy Ranch Community, Fair Winds, yes. So in the absence of that commemoration, that annual commemoration that we have here in Oceanside, wanted to thank him for all, for all of his service and for reminding us every year of what took place. We need to remember, we have still living, living history, people who give living histories of what happened. And I am so, I also want to congratulate him on being 101 years old and still very, very active. I'd like to also thank everyone for the flowers that I got. They're back here. There are actually more at home, but thank you very much. I'd also like to thank staff this year for an incredible year of facing down some very difficult times. I know we've had lean staffs, and we've had a few people having to, to stay home, and, and some that, that it was, it was, they were able to commute and telecommute. So thank you very much, staff, for making it possible for us to continue to provide services to the community during difficult times. And finally, I'd like to, I know this is a, you know, December tends to be, you know, some of the happiest times and also some of the saddest times. People tend to be, you know, especially if they're alone, they tend to be more blue. There tend to be more sadness and even suicides. Please, 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 everyone, please stay safe. The vaccines are on the way. There is hope. It's hopefully coming to an end soon. That is COVID. We've had over 50 deaths in Oceanside. And we do not want to see a single, another life pass because of COVID. So I want to wish you Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Holidays. And from all of us here, please be safe. Thank you. Wish to adjourn this meeting to the next meeting, which is going to be on January 6th, Wednesday at 3:30. Thank you.